We'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Fincher. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Three, all opposed. Two. I've called this meeting tonight to discuss an intergovernmental agreement for the use of the gymnasium on Stiegall Drive. Can you guys hear?
Dan, can you tell me if you can't hear me? Okay. Can you hear me?
I do, yeah.
All right. We were, with regards to the use of the gym behind the stadium, y'all have been in discussion with the city of Jasper and the agreement that y'all had proposed. In our last meeting, asked that the city pay y'all a damage deposit of $2,500, pay half utilities associated with the building, and pay a $1,000 cleanup fee each month. The mayor and the city attorney came to my office yesterday afternoon, and we discussed those terms. I don't know if any of y'all had conveyed it to them, but I went ahead and discussed the terms with them. And the mayor was, requested that those provisions be changed to where the city would be responsible for the cleanup of the gym after use. Waive the damage deposit, and in return, the city would repair any damage that they or their agents made on the building. And they agreed to the half cleanup on the utilities. The utilities are basically during the school year. So if the gym was used over the Christmas break or over the summer break by the city, the city would bear the entire cost of the expense then. With regards to the cleanup, I expressed to the mayor and the city attorney the board's concerns about the logistics of what happens when the gym is not cleaned, or if the gym was not cleaned up and the school had to use it for the North Star facility or whoever else is going to be using it. The mayor assured me and authorized provisions in the contract that would allow the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, whoever y'all wanted designate, to call the mayor. He would have city workers over and have the facility cleaned, you know, immediately. And what we had talked about was basically doing an inspection at seven. Have somebody go there looking at it seven o'clock in the morning if it's not cleaned up. Call the mayor, and he'll send somebody over at no later than 7:30. Since that time, I believe the chairman and the commissioner had discussed an alternative plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you mind telling us, the $2,500 refundable deposit?
Refundable deposit, yeah.
Just for damages, but no damages refundable.
Yeah.
$1,000 a month.
To reverse the school.
And we would clean it up and take care of it.
Yeah.
What was the other?
Half the utilities.
Half the utilities, thank you.
And then insurance was also there, but we called the city's provider of insurance and a certificate. Once we all execute whatever it is that you're going to execute, the certificate of insurance can be put in place so that the city's insurance policy covers any damages. The, after that meeting, the chairman, your chairman and commissioner, had some discussions about an alternative plan. And that's the document that you have in front of you. It basically says that the county, the school board would lease the building to the county. The county would be responsible for all of the costs associated inside the building with regards to any maintenance or anything of that nature. The school would be responsible for both cutting the grass and the exterior maintenance. This, the one that's in front of you, reflects that the county would pay all of the water, all of the sewer, and one half of the gas. I mean, water and electricity and half the gas. But I believe that there was a meeting this afternoon that I wasn't in where the county has now agreed to pay all of the gas. We'll talk about that later. The school would be allowed to use the building during school hours to meet our commitments with North Star. And then, on the city's contract, what we had, and the city didn't have an issue, we didn't really talk about this with the mayor yesterday, or I didn't, but you had directed that it be terminated on 30 days' notice. I think the city was fine with that. County had asked for it to be a 60-day notice in there. Either party can terminate without cause. There is no obligation in either contract to fix the roof. I think everybody knows that the roof of the building is going to have to be repaired at some point in time. And I think the consensus with everybody is just, when that comes, we'll deal with it at that time and on terms that everybody can, you know, can be fair.
This afternoon in discussions, commissioner indicated that they may be willing to replace the roof. And when it's needed, in turn, for a, when that happens, for a little bit longer lease, so he would be guaranteed they could use it.
Did you say?
Use of it. Because the roof, as we stated, the roof, you're going to get a couple more years if you sign it at some point when they replace it.
I mentioned it on the city contract. I don't remember if I told you, the city agreed to put the water in its name, so the city would pick up the entire bill on the water bill. I don't want to mention that at all. That's pretty much it for mine, for why you got this in front of you and what happened in all this with regards to the gym.
And I'll give you a little bit of background. Last week, I made a phone call, actually several phone calls, to the mayor's office and never received a phone call back. And I've spent hours on the phone with Chuck Bradley because he has wrestling planned and hasn't been able to be able to use the building. He showed up on Monday and wasn't able to use the building. And so I guess that, he went and actually spoke to the rec department about letting their wrestling come in under them and letting them work out some kind of agreement so that they could get something taken care of. And that's the reason why I called this meeting, because we have kids that are committed to a program, and we need to do something to handle this situation so that it doesn't go on any longer than it already has.
So where are we?
I think at this point that, I mean, the offer on the table from the recreation department and from the county covers more of our expenses than the offer that we have on the table from the city of Jasper.
I guess what I would need is, it seemed like all three entities, the board, the county, and the city, want to have some type of agreement that allows the gym to be used when it's not being used during school hours. And I need to know if y'all want to do it with the city or if you want to do it with the county. And then we need to talk about the terms. You know, we've got two sets of terms, and if those are fine, we'll take whatever those are, or if you want those eventually, we can do that as well.
I would recommend that we go with county.
Well, Dan, I'm sure you were told to do say that, but let's back up here just a bit.
And what did you say?
I said, I'm sure somebody suggested that you do that.
That's not the truth.
Well, let's talk about this for a minute. We've had three meetings on this, and out of every meeting, we came out unanimous. And I thought we were in negotiations with the city because they asked it for JYSI. We sat in this meeting and said, we cannot do a deal with JYSI because they're not an incorporated government entity.
We said we weren't going to do a deal with the charity.
But we would do it with the city.
And we could do an intergovernmental agreement, so.
We sat in here for hours and hammered out a deal. And today, I get, you know, or whenever it was, yesterday, I get a phone call saying we're going to talk about recreation. Today, I get a copy of something with county. My question is, who authorized anybody to negotiate with the county for the Board of Education?
John, I believe that's why I'm wearing this meeting, so that we can discuss it.
Who authorized?
And we can make a decision about what we want to do.
But who authorized us to enter into a draft agreement with county?
I don't think we have to have authorization to enter into a draft agreement with the county.
So any one of us as a board member can go into an agreement?
I wish you would have, instead of just sitting on your rear and letting this happen so that we have.
Sitting on your rear and letting it happen?
John.
We need time out.
No, time out here, John. I'm just telling you.
You know what you have done here? You've created a mess here between the city and the county. You have created a tremendous mess.
John, we had kids on Monday night, standing outside in the cold.
Did you tell those kids after our meeting to come and go to that, to go in that gym? You'd take care of it?
No, I did not. I was under the understanding that they could continue to use it until we reached an agreement.
Somebody has told me an untruth there.
Well, whatever you think. I want to do what is right for our kids, John.
Well, you said here.
And I think we need an agreement with someone so that they can use that. And we've been putting it off for two months, and it's time to discuss it.
I just don't know when we jumped track. When did we jump track?
I don't think we've jumped track. I mean, I don't care who we do the agreement with.
There ain't nobody that sits in this room and anybody that's in here that knows my 30-year history here that wants kids to be in a ball field or a gym anymore than I do. But there's some legal issues here, and there's some issues that we're restrained from, and I'm not going to be a part of it. And there's an ethical thing here. We were negotiating, I thought, I did not know anything about, you know, that we had severed relationships with the negotiation with the city. And I don't, you know, I was all for the county. I've sat on the board when the county, we worked out agreement to have it. But we've got a policy, a policy, I believe it's KG or GK, that defines this, and we've been, if somebody's been in violation of school policy and been negotiating contracts or on behalf of the board, that the board didn't have any action there. We should have had some kind of meeting and discussed this. To be called in here tonight in front of people that we all know and care about and all over the room is putting us in a really bad situation. And I don't, and I don't like it, and I totally am astounded that we're put in this position.
First and foremost, we don't have the right to be negotiating anything with anyone in the county as a school board member. That's the duty of the superintendent and his designates. We don't have this right.
Urban, I haven't met personally with anybody.
You're in violation of the oath of office.
No, I'm not.
You're in violation of SACTs, you're in violation of ethics, you're in violation of the PSC.
You know, Urban.
And is short of violation of state law.
Urban, if you want to, why don't you go ahead and call them? Because I am not in violation. And that's the reason why I called this meeting, so that we could come to a determination about what we want to do.
You've already committed the act.
No, I don't believe that is.
And if Dan and Byron go along with it, then they're in violation.
Urban, that's enough.
No.
We're here, yes, we're here.
We're here to discuss this. We wouldn't be a private meeting anywhere.
We had an agreement two weeks ago to go to the city with. Nobody come back and said the city's rejected it. Nobody come back and said the superintendent or his designate has worked out any agreement with the county. The only ones that are supposed to do this, not me, not Wendy, not you. This is the duty of the superintendent or his designates being the attorney or someone else he chooses. It's not in our hand to do it. I've been on here 10 years, young man, and I know exactly what I'm talking about.
I mean, it was my understanding, from what I had been told, that the city wasn't interested in working with us. I didn't know that we were still meeting with the city. I had not personally met with anybody on it. Joe Herman asked me Friday night, what was going on with the old green gym. I said, I told him to go talk to Rick or Dr. Desper, and I didn't know.
That's exactly what you should have done.
We wanted kids in the gym, we wanted the programs that need the space, we have the space. We don't, we don't really even want that. We need that for a few hours a day for the North Star facilities. We don't need the, we don't need it for anything else. So all I want is some kind of agreement worked out with either one of them. I mean, I don't care. You know, I didn't realize that the city was still negotiating. I thought that was done. But still, I sent Joe to speak with Dr. Desper and Rick. And after that, I don't know what's went on after that, I don't know who negotiated what. All I know is it's just turned into a big mess, and we just need to straighten it out. We need to move forward and do what's in the best interest of the kids.
I want kids in there as much as you do, Byron, and you did right. But I want it to be done the right way. I want it to be done according to what the state law says, ethics says, and keep ourselves clean with SACTs. You know, it's not up to me. If anybody had asked me anything, I'd have directed them straight to Dr. Desper. That's our duty. That's, it's not up to us to talk to people about working deals with them. It's not up to me to go to the commissioner to work a deal or to the mayor. They can operate kind of under little different circumstances than we can. We're closely scrutinized. We have to be careful. And in this case, someone's took it upon themselves to do some work behind everybody's I'm not against the kids being in there. I want them in there, but I want them in there where the agreement's in the right way. To know they've been using it for six weeks. If a child got hurt in there, it's us that's responsible, because there's an agreement I'm not against the mayor, I'm not against the commissioner, I'm not against any of them. There's a right way to handle things, there's a wrong way. It's been handled the wrong way.
Urban, if you would do your homework before you come in here and jump into conclusions, you would know that Phillip had conversations yesterday with the city of Jasper. I was not included on those personal discussions that they had. And Dr. Desper had conversations with people from the rec department and with Robert Jones today and at the end of last week to try to reach a resolution. And the way the county became involved in this is because Chuck Bradley didn't feel like he could get anywhere with where he was going, and we weren't working on a deal. And he got presented with another option to accomplish the same end.
Dr. Desper, were you involved in these negotiations?
Today, I met with Joe and Rob this afternoon.
Were you involved yesterday?
When I found out we were having a meeting, I did talk to Phillip, I talked to you, I talked to Mr. Trammell, I talked to Wendy. Didn't talk to you, I talked to you today, had email come, email come back with you. You know, just so, just so I think it's important to understand, we've really had three different meetings dealing with this issue. And after the, after the work session, there was no direction to go anywhere else with this. And so, you know, at that point, there never was any authorization for anyone to begin using the gym. The gym was used, we provided a key, we were asked to allow to move some stuff in, we allowed to do some stuff in. I didn't real, the first hint I had, and Mike said something to me one day about his daughter going to something at the gym, I was not aware that they were using the gym at the beginning of that call. We looked at two different drafts of using with the city about an agreement. That was unacceptable. We meant on those and no, we did not come to an agreement on using those. So finally, I guess Rick called and talked with the mayor while he was out of town. I can't remember when that, what day that was. And we were asked to give to the rest of the week to finish up. I believe they're having signups, and we were asked to give to the rest of the week. At that particular point, with no authorization to use the gym in the fear of liability after the last board meeting, I authorized the locks to be changed to protect folks from somebody might get hurt at the gym. And so at that point, there was no further discussion. At that point, I've had one meeting with the mayor, and I've had one meeting with Mr. Jones. And that's the extent, except for my discussions with Phillip. Phillip's been, Phillip's talked above. And based on discussions yesterday, Phillip drew a draft up of what Mr. Jones has offered. Mr. Jones came in this afternoon, and actually, we discussed some points in there, and we clarified some points in there, that I think will be a more agreeable, a better agreement for the board if the board chooses to go this, goes this direction. But we can't just let folks go in and use the gym. The state constitution of Georgia says, no school taxes can be used for anything except school, directly related to school business. There's been several court cases about what they can be used for and what they cannot be used for. But we cannot, we cannot ask the taxpayers of this county to subsidize recreation. And if we are, for example, paying utilities for the rec department to be in there, that's the use of tax money. Utilities on that building are about, if you added them all up, are about $11,000 a year. And that was with a mild winter last year. So, you know, we can't provide that. We are in there very little, just so y'all know. North Star does not have PE in there. North Star has a traveling recreational therapist that visits the various North Star sites. And as a part of the child's IEP, the recreational therapist is in here, then they use the gym. My last check, they hadn't used it in a week. Sometimes a person might be here and it might be used two days a week, it might be used more. It just depends on when they have access to the recreational therapist. I don't want anybody thinking it's a full-blown PE class in the gym. But, you know, it is important to point out that we cannot use school tax money, we can't ask the taxpayers to subsidize. Recreation is a function of either the city government or the county government. And, you know, we have in the past worked with both groups. We work currently with JYSI at the middle school field, we allow them to store their uniforms in there. We keep the field cut and lined off because we use that field too. They're allowed to use it. We have worked last year with Mr. Jones, they rented facilities from us last year until their new rec center was completed. And we've worked with both groups. And, you know, people have said it over and over again, but we would like the children to have the opportunity to be in there. But it has to be, we have to have the proper things, we have to have insurance, we have to have proper, to be in there. We can't just give it away. It's not ours, it's not mine, it's not any of us up here to give the utilities in the form of tax money away. So, you know, we have met, we've talked with both of them, both have made us a proposal. We have gone through two proposals with the city, and we had three meetings on that. And as of the last meeting, we did not agree to use that. This is a new proposal that came to be in yesterday, I guess, yesterday afternoon, and I sent it to you as soon as I got it this morning. That's kind of a summary, just a little if I left anything out. We don't want to be, we don't want to be in the business of recreation. We've got enough to do with education. But we do support the use of a facility if we can. And, you know, what we have to look for is what is the best deal for the use of the gym? JYSI requested use of the gym, and they were going to do tumbling, gymnastics, and wrestling in there. Talking to our county recreation folks today, they were going to use it more of a traditional gymnasium for different events. They were fine with JYSI using that facility and other entities in the county using it as well. And so that's kind of the status on what we have, unless I've left something out. Rick, you think you're in with...
Madam Chairman?
We've got two issues going on here. We've got two issues going on here. One is improper board action, which we're going to have to deal with ourselves. We need to cease the down-talking to other board members. We're all equal. You know, we may have a gavel, but we're all equal, we all have one vote. So let's be, let's try to keep it civil from that standpoint. But the bigger issue, besides the fact that we've got rogue board members going out and negotiating contracts, is that now we've got two entities that we care about a lot, the city and the county, who are both trying to provide recreation for our young people. And with all due respect, it was my understanding that the county, and I don't think they asked for this per se, but that they had their gyms now, and they were satisfied and not going to need them. When the city came to us and approached us, we sat down and hammered for hours and came up with an agreement that we felt we could live with. But I've not been made aware by anybody, and as far as anybody doing their homework on, knowing anything, I can tell you, I hadn't been informed on anything. I haven't gotten an email, I've got every email that I've gotten regarding this right here in this stack. If you can find one besides today or yesterday, then, you know, go to it. Nobody's been informed about this. I talked, the mayor and I had a conversation, and in part of our conversation, he came by to see me, and he thought we didn't want them to use it. And I told him, nobody, nobody wants the kids not to use the gym. Help us pay for it. He said, that's reasonable, and then we talked about some other issues. And now I understand he came back and negotiated, and has talked about some other things. It sounds to me like we've been talking back and forth and negotiating. You know, I respect the county as well. I mean, I, we've worked these things out over the years, either through reciprocation agreements or parental agreements or whatever. So we wouldn't be in violation of Georgia law. And I'm not going to sit here and vote to violate Georgia law. But what concerns me now is we have put one proposal in front of the city, we put an entirely different proposal in front of the county, much as if we're treating them And I didn't think we were negotiating to see who was going to get the best deal. I thought we were negotiating to let the kids have a place to participate. And that's what happens when you have a rogue board member get out there and on their own negotiate stuff without the rest of the board being informed. We had settled policies, KG. We had settled vote, unanimous. And I know we don't have secretary here, but if you read the minutes, it would be 5-0, we voted. I remember Brian, I mean, Byron saying, that's it. And I talked to him today about it. He was settled on it. I know he was, I could tell. I've been around him long enough to know that. We were all settled on this, and then we went out and did something else. Now, all I've got to say is, Wendy, it appears that you've negotiated something here that is kind of outside the realm, and I'm just suggesting, you're going to have to fix it. Because I'm not going to get between the city and the county. I do stuff, I do, I treasure both their friendships, and I'm not getting in the middle of this and picking one over the other. And with all due respect to Robert, and I think he understands, I thought we were still negotiating with the city. And the fellow back there, sitting back there with Robert, I think the world of, is an honest, straightforward guy there in this community, I know he was dealing honestly. Somebody's been misled, and it needs to get straightened out. And I'm willing to take recess if you want to straighten it. willing to take recess if you want to straighten it out. Or I'm willing to call this meeting adjourned and go home till we can fix it. Cause I don't think we'd make a decision tonight with all these pending issues hanging out here. That's where I stand.
Well, I'm not pretty sure about all of that. I know I was involved with, talking with Joe Friday. I've been, not, haven't had any conversations with Robert or the mayor. As far as I know, Joe's not, wasn't the one who negotiated contract anyhow. But, but we've been working on this for how long?
Since September.
Since September? What month is this?
Oh, it's November.
You know, does it really take that long for a government to work out some kind of an agreement? I don't really care who the agreement was with. But from September to November, over something that's so simple as the use of the gym for, for kids. I mean, our policy KG is for if someone, individual person wants to come in and rent our gym, it's not. KG is my understanding is not for if another government entity wants to work out something with us. That's not what, what that's for. I mean, if you read KG, nobody's going to rent our facilities. If you read the fine print on KG, no one is going to rent our facilities. This old green gym down here is the one that we really don't need it. It's costing us a fortune for the North Star folks to use it. I'm good with that. We have to provide services for the North Star folks. Not a problem. But if we can work out a deal where it actually saves us money and the kids get in the gym, other than the North Star folks, we get more use out of it. I mean, how long's that gym been there? I mean, I'm pretty sure it's depreciated out. I mean, it's, it's got some age on it, but obviously there's still some value to it because, you know, it's a place for the kids to go. Uh, I've had no involvement in negotiating any of these deals, but it's been since September. Somebody needs to step up to the plate and we need to get this ironed out so we can move on. We're not in the recreation business. We're in the education business. We have an opportunity here that's a little different than our other facilities because we don't use that one much. Let's work out something and let's move on.
The information that we were given at the last board meeting was that the city was not interested in paying the utilities or paying for the use or paying the rental or paying.
Yes. And that was why I was-
That was, that was the last information that I was getting.
That was why I was encouraged when Joe came up and talked to me Friday night. I said, hey, this may work out. Go see Dr. Desper or Mr. Luther. Come on, let's do something.
Who, who was the other individual? I know we're talking about the city and the county and we talked about another individual, another group in charge of wrestling or cheerleading or-
JYSA, JYSA is, is the organization-
So I'm understanding, yes, sir. So I'm understanding now that JYSA is saying that they will move out from under the city and go to the county for this program and their kids will get to, get to participate with the county. They're going to take over the wrestling and the cheerleading? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I can't answer that. I wasn't- What I understand is that the county recreation department is willing to work with JYSA to use the facility. Is that-
May I speak?
Can I?
I was notified. I was up in a, in a meeting at, at another location out of, up in the state on Friday. Mr. Hernan called me about this. Said that the gym could possibly, y'all have some issues with the gym, the fact, you know, we can work with the city and this, that and the other. Wanted to know more or less if the county wanted the gym and if we did, what, what could be done. I said, the only thing that we could do is I would be willing to rent the gym or lease the gym for a dollar a year. We'd wind up paying all utilities. And if the school wanted to use it, if the school system wanted to use it, then we would charge them rent to help recoup some of the heat costs or whatever on that, on that gym. And then I told him, I said, I know it's got a roof issue. If we wind up having to replace the roof in the future, that we'd like to extend the lease a little longer to get our money recouped on that and get the building up to standards. Now that was Friday and, and we got into, you know, this right here. The proposal that's on the board there is just what I just, you know, we just put together at spur of the moment to see what we'll do. I was under the impression the deal with the city was off. So I didn't know. I don't, I'm not here to get in between. I'm just here to try to help to see if we can come up with some solution to get these kids back and, and get them into, into a facility. And I'm not here to have, and I don't think the mayor is either for me and him being, being in conflict. We're just trying to work something out. We'd make this thing work. And I don't want to, you know, personally, I don't want to step on anybody's toes. If the city's still got a shot at it, go for it. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm here to help whichever way we want to go and keep everybody out of, you know, out of harm's way with sacks or whatever y'all are trying to work out. But that was more or less the deal was we would lease the gym for a dollar a year. Anybody wanting to use it, we'd do the standard rate like we do now for recreation center, twenty-five dollars an hour for renting it. And, and that's going to how we do it. Now we might work out something, you know, to help, help alleviate some of that issue. But that's, that's pretty well. And I'd help pay for expenses of the heat, gas bill. We pay for the power and, and the water. The gas is what's really expensive. So that's an item that, that we have to do. Cause I, you know, as you know, in the past, we rented the gym from y'all and for X amount of dollars a year. We call those figures. So, and, and as I said earlier, we don't need it. I mean, I'd like to have it. I mean, first of all, let it sit empty. We'll put some use to it. But the county per se doesn't really need it. But I don't want the thing to be sitting empty and let the kids, if we got another place for some more kids, that'd be great. That, that was the intent. So I'm, hopefully I, you know, I'm not trying to get anything started, but that was the intent. And my conversation with Joe and, and he was, like I said, I was out of town, didn't get back till, till Sunday or Saturday night. So that's where we're at, guys. That's all of that.
Madam Chairman, could I be recognized?
Sorry, John.
I mean, we opened it for discussion. I just wondered if I could be recognized.
No, I'm sorry. Who are you?
Bill Pickett. I represent the city.
Okay.
Okay, I can speak?
Please do.
First of all, again, my name is Bill Pickett and I represent the city of Jasper. Um, I came tonight because I thought we were going to talk about the city's contract. Uh, I did not realize under any set of circumstances, we had now got into a bidding war with the county. Um, this is all news to me. Yesterday, so that you, so everybody knows what happened yesterday, is the mayor contacted me and told me that we had been locked out, JYSA is a, that's a city organization. They're not a real entity. Cause the city was going to lease this building. And JYSA operates under the city. Uh, that we had been, the locks have been changed and the wrestlers cooking there. And this, Madam Chairman, you mentioned that the wrestlers were standing out on the street and didn't get to do the wrestling. And this doesn't last very long at all. In fact, um, it's going to be over. It looks like before we ever get it started. Uh, but I did go, I decided, I called Mr. Landham. I went by his office. Um, and we talked about, uh, what the school board wanted. And we even went to the extent of calling the agent for the city to make sure how we were going to do the insurance. I don't know. There's been no negotiation. Uh, we haven't ever said no. We haven't said yes. I didn't know that, I didn't really know, I guess until now, that you might not have known what we talked about yesterday because we were going to put together a contract, a governmental agreement, so that everybody could look, look and see what we had. Um, and now I find out we're in a bidding war. Uh, the city of Jasper is not, under any circumstances, going to expend taxpayer money to promote, to pay a, a lot of expenses. I mean, I think Mr. Landham has a list of what we talked about yesterday. We even talked about fixing the roof. Uh, we talked about the insurance. We talked about, uh, the pile bill, splitting the pile bill. Because y'all still have kids in there that use it. And we, we thought that was more than fair. Um, but now it looks like we're in a bidding war. And we're not, we're not here to be in a bidding war. I thought we were the player. Didn't know the county was going to come in behind us and try to sideswipe, uh, these kids being able to use the gym. And I don't know who y'all mentioned. You mentioned a name there of somebody that does the wrestling going to the county. Well, that's not true. These parents are here. Um, JYSA was formed and operates under, uh, the city's guidance. Um, we, we even have, some of us individuals, we have a mayor's tournament, golf tournament. We have other fundraisers and these fundraisers go to promote this organization. So, because tax money's not going to be spent on. I mean, we're not, we're not in that. Um, the mayor would ne- never agree to spend taxpayer money to do something like that. But again, we didn't know we was coming to a fight or an argument. We just thought we were, we were the player.
Bill, excuse me one second. Just to clarify what you said. I was in the help, JYSA was getting started. So younger parents that was here, I've been in JYSA for many, many years. I served on the recreation board in the county. With all due respect, I don't, I honestly believe in my discussions with the commissioner and, and with Joe, the county did not come here to undercut anybody or anything else. They're, I'm, I'm concerned that they may be a victim in this a little bit. So don't, don't anybody get that impression that they've been trying to undercut the city.
Right, right. I understand. And I heard Mr. Jones say that and I respect that. Uh, but, but at the same time-
I think honesty compels me to, to interrupt you for just a moment, sir. The city never had permission to use the gym. Ever. They were, I, I received a call and was asked to unlock the gym so the mats could be stored in there. It was never anti, there was never any permission granted. It was never any agreement reached. We've been using the gym now for six weeks. We've been going back and forth with negotiations. I've been told multiple times that there was no intent to pay any of the utilities is what I personally have been told. And so you don't have permission to be in there. You're not going to pay any of the utilities or now you're saying you're going to. At some point, you got to say you can't be in there anymore. And, and, and I hate that for the kids. I really do hate that for the kids. But we've been taken advantage of by somebody going on and moving in when they were just supposed to be putting mats in the, in the gym. There should have been an agreement worked out, a legal binding, intergovernmental agreement worked out. You've presented one. We looked at it. There was a revisment we looked at. You've done two, exactly. We've had a work session and they, they did not agree to that. And so at that point, there was no point in negotiating anymore. So I'm not condoning anything that's been done, except the fact that we finally had to say for liability issues, you can't be in there without permission. No, nobody can use a facility without permission to be in there. And that's what, in essence, we did for six weeks.
I, I understand that, sir. But I, I'm not going to take issue with it either. But I have to say, I, I was under a different pressure.
There was no written agreement. Uh, there was never, it was never, I was never even asked about using the facility. And I can't give permission. It has to be a board approved.
City signed an agreement.
But we didn't sign the agreement.
Well, I thought you were going to.
We did not. Because we were told there was no intent to pay any of the utilities. And once again, we cannot pay utilities for the rec department to use the gym. It's against the law. It's against the constitution.
I understand that. But again, I guess my question to you again, are you, are we in a bidding war with the gymnasium after all these things?
I'll be honest with you-
The city's never asked this, this entity, the school board for anything, ever. Uh, in fact, all we have done is give and give and give.
I disagree with that. We just given, we just gave property to the city out in front of Jasper Middle School for absolutely no retribution.
And we gave you the street that sits right there by on that wall. And we gave you a seventy-five thousand dollar break on a tap on fee.
And when was that? Fifteen, ten years ago? It's not been in the time that I have been in, in Pickens County and on the board.
Well, it's been, it's, it's, it has been done.
And those things were in the past. And the things that you put in the original contract were all things that were given and agreed upon with the previous board that were unacceptable to this board.
Well, what difference does it make whether they were done today or yesterday, so long as it benefited a child? See-
We're about benefiting children. That's, and that's the very reason why I have been working hard to get those kids in that gym.
Well, governments need to work together.
I totally agree with that.
And to say that, uh, we're not going to take into consideration anything anybody's ever done for me in the past is not something that is, and we're in a working relationship. Um, the city's done plenty and, and they continue to do it. And here we are, the first time we've ever had and to come, to come to ask this board for any cooperation, uh, and we're paying for it. Uh, all of a sudden, we just find out we're, we're undercut and we're in a bidding war.
You've been working on this since September. It is November we're doing, right?
Yes.
When does, when does the, you're doing this for your wrestling program, correct?
Mm-hmm.
When is the wrestling season over?
February.
February.
Is there not a sense of urgency at some point?
Well, um, Mr. Long, uh, maybe you didn't know it. But I had delivered a signed contract that I thought was going to be signed.
Well, and that's part of the problem. You guys delivered a signed contract. You gave your wrestling folks permission to go in the gym, under the assumption that we were going to sign. So to me, maybe I'm just a little naive. I'm not good at this politics things. But that looked to me like that would have been a really good bargaining chip when we, when we have to lock our doors and we, we are the ones that kick the kids out in the street. That makes us look like we're the bad guys.
You guys were, you guys were aware that, you know, you, you guys were aware that we did not approve-
This guy was not.
Well, you've been talking to Mr. Landham. You, you have been dealing with Mr. Landham.
Yesterday.
You were aware, uh, and, and certainly, you know, y'all were aware that, that we had not approved-
Yesterday.
Well, you said a while ago that the city would not spend any money of the-
Taxpayer's money.
City's taxpayer's money.
Taxpayer's money.
So if you're not going to spend anything on the building, either the city's taxpayer's money, then you haven't got anything to bargain with.
We, we said that we would reduce the maintenance. We said that we, uh, and said that we were going to pay the power bill. Somebody else is going to have to pay us back.
Who's going to pay the city power bill, the power bill?
JYSA will ultimately do that. But that's not a contract because y'all can't contract with them. Y'all can't contract with them. But we can't.
Madam Chairman, I have a call question.
Madam Chairman, may I speak once before you call for a order?
Sure. I would appreciate it if you would have called me back so that we could have had this discussion before we came to a meeting, as a matter of fact.
Madam Chairman, I apologize if I missed your call and didn't return your call. But I have not seen your name on the log of the city of Jasper. But I may have missed that. So I'll give you that if you'll give me the fact that I didn't return your call because I was avoiding. I'm, I'm up here today simply to say that I started this after a few months back to help the cheerleading program for JYSA and potentially the wrestling program, which we were about, about to bring in. And I'm not going to get into all the semantics that you guys have been talking about tonight. Simply say this, that I met with Mr. Desper and we had an agreement. I was giving-
No, 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 no. We didn't have an agreement, sir.
We had an agreement to agree.
Uh, you presented us a proposal.
Yes. That's an agreement.
We did not agree to it.
Okay. Well- With, with that, I began to try to negotiate that. I turned that over to the city attorney to deal with the board attorney. And they brought me a contract that I changed and throw in all the, all the things that J Y S A had done for Pickens County Board of Education, especially the Pickens County Middle School. And that was sent back to me, and Mr. Pickett told me personally, Mayor quit trying to be an attorney. I said, okay, you draw up the contract, I'm out of it, and you bring me back the contract when it's ready. So, he prepares a contract, brings it to me, takes it to Mr. Landrum, and brings it back to me. I sign it, send it back. We hurriedly get these children in the gym so that they could practice, so they could compete just last week in their cheerleading program. And I'm gonna tell you, I think the ball was dropped because it was never brought back to us after I signed that first. I heard rumors, and rumors of rumors, and even went online to watch some of the board action. But I was never contacted, except I believe from a call that Wendy made last week. But I have not had a conversation, except to say, I did go speak to John when I heard that this thing was falling apart. And we had a few little conversation over how broke J Y S A was and how we can afford the thousands of dollars that were being asked. That's the only contact that I had. Because I left it up to the city attorney Landrum, uh, county attorney Landrum, and the city attorney Pickett to work out a contract that we could all sign. So, the ball was dropped on that level. Don't take it personally, Bill. But we never got the contracts back and forth, because they could not do it, I could not do it, so we turned it over to our attorneys. That's where it sat. If you realize that, the City of Jasper never said we were not interested in taking over the gymnasium. I was not interested in paying those fees that we could not afford to pay one tax into another tax. And I did present a trem- present a tremendous amount of documentation as to what the City of Jasper had provided. And Ms. Wendy, Chairman, that property was donated to the City of Jasper to build the road in front of Jasper Middle School, Jasper Middle School, after much discussion, much discussion. And finally, that was some payback to what the city had given when Harmony Middle School was built. And Mr. Pickett, would you read for me, because I probably will blow it, what Mr. Landrum had brought to me back in two thousand and four? And I, I totally let, uh, Mr. Landrum read that document.
Well, I will say, we are not going back to what has been done before. We're here tonight to talk about...
You can't move forward without knowing something about the past, so I take the blinders off.
I don't think that those things are important. I think what's important is that we come to an agreement about what we need to do now.
Well, let's agree. The pride, that what you, the county has gotten involved in this for whatever reason to confuse the issue, and, and the commissioner just said, if I understood. Are you out of this, Commissioner?
I can be.
Would you get out of this for me?
I will step back and let you negotiate, and if they don't, if they, if y'all can't work out a deal, then maybe we can, but I'll just step back at this point.
If you'll step back, I would greatly appreciate it, because we were in the process of beating this contract out. Bill, read that document for me, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, before we get started...
Madam Chair, are you the chairman here?
No, sir, but you're not telling exactly the truth.
I'm telling exactly the truth.
Did you not say to me and Mr. Qualls, you would not pay any, you would not pay any utilities on that building?
Was that in the contract?
Did you not say to Mr. Qualls?
No, I did not.
Mr. Qualls?
I believe you did.
I would not pay, I'm gonna come in and use your facility, not pay the utilities?
That's exactly what you said, sir.
Do we have a contract, Mr. Pickett?
I don't, I didn't bring mine. I thought, I thought...
Do we have a contract that we agreed to pay the utilities?
No, I have your second one, and the second one say you agreed to pay half of it.
That's what we agreed to.
You told me yesterday that you would pay perhaps utilities.
I did. And then full-time, when we were there, when the school system was not using the facility.
That's correct. You told me that yesterday.
But you told me...
You told me personally, you would not, that you could not afford...
But we were, you told me, you told me also in this earlier part of this discussion, you called me out, and you said, we did not have an agreement. We were negotiating, sir.
We did not have an agreement.
We were negotiating.
Just because you signed a piece of paper and sent it over here doesn't make it an agreement.
And until you sent even one back, and you, was that being signed?
And the board chose not to sign it.
Well, no one chose to contact us either.
The same that you did, you used the contract check to tell him that you couldn't go in with the gymnasium on that contract?
You knew, you were aware of that gym lock was gonna be changed.
I was waiting for the attorneys to bring me a contract.
Mr. Mayor, you were aware the locks were gonna be changed. I was, I was when Rick Little called you and told you that.
I was not in town. I told Rick to wait till I got home.
You asked me for to wait till the end of the week, which we did.
Okay. And I didn't realize you were gonna change the locks. That was a cold thing to do. First, no, no pun intended.
No, sir.
Mr. Landrum, Mr. Landrum?
No, no, sir.
Somebody call an order here. Mr. Landrum, may I recognize...
I will call you to order. Would you please sit down? Because obviously, we're not getting anywhere with this. If you want to sit down and talk about this rationally, with the...
I, I, I want to speak to Mr. Landrum.
But we are not gonna go back and rehash what you've done for the board previously. The problem here is that you have said you will only give us half the utilities. Okay, let me ask you. The agreement that we have gotten with the City of Jasper, oh, and by the way, let me just go here. I don't appreciate that you have told parents that it's the Board of Education's problem that we're not trying to work this out. You're trying to throw it off on us. I don't appreciate that. Mr. Weaver, it is wrong. What you have done is you have procrastinated to try to halt, to try to make us throw out what we have to do.
I had the contract in the attorney's hand.
Your contract was ridiculous.
You had no permission to be in that gym from anyone.
I had three keys given to me by Rick Little.
You had, you had permission to be in the gym to move the mat in. That was what Phillip called and asked for me. I had Rick go do it and, and let you move your stuff in. You had no permission to have cheerleading and tumbling, and now we're to wrestling, we're to the third activity, and we haven't gotten any agreement now?
Well, that's why we're here tonight. We met with Mr. Landrum yesterday.
Johnny, let me, give me just a second, please. Let me ask the board this. With regard to an agreement with the city, the mayor has said that he is willing to pay half the utilities. Do y'all agree on that part of it?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
No? Do you have a counterproposal for how the utilities are to be paid?
Now, a moment, I don't... Guys, we, we can sit here all night long. We've, we've got ourselves in a mess. I mean, a mess. I've been, this, I've been on here seven years and eleven months, and I've never had, and, and I've been to three worm wrestlings, and I've never seen you be a mess, a miss. We, 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 we've been nego... Here's what I know, okay? We've been negotiating with the city, with J Y S A, to use this gymnasium for wrestling and cheerleading, and any other thing that they wanna use it for, as long as they meet what we've asked them to do. And we put forth a proposal. Now, I understand that there has been a proposal back. Like, that's called a negotiation, basically.
Yes, sir.
So, we've been going through a negotiation. I've, I've heard, I've heard, well, we're not gonna pay anything, but then, you know, nobody's officially said it's over. So, I, I thought we were still working on trying to get the J Y S A kids into the gym and get it on. I told you absolutely, Johnny, when you came to see me, I didn't call you. You came to see me, and you were concerned that we didn't want the kids in there, and I told you we did. And, and I told you, we can't let them be in there for nothing. We gotta have something. You gotta help us pay for things. You, you made a statement, said, well, it sounds reasonable, Johnny.
And you said police protection didn't count.
And they what?
Police protection didn't count.
Yeah. Well, directing traffic didn't count, is what I said. That's a normal job. But neither, neither here nor there, we either ended negotiations with the city or we didn't end negotiations. If we ended negotiations, then it's, then it's, then, then it's fine to step in with the county. And that's when the county wants to step in, as I understand it. We either, we're in negotiations with the city or we're in negotiations with the county. My question is, why are we, why are we offering different terms to different people? Is the board prepared to give the City of Jasper the same contract that is prepared to give, that the city, that the county is prepared to sign?
I would be happy to do that.
And it's totally...
It accomplishes the end that we want.
It's totally changed from what we unanimously approved, but is that, you know, I mean, but, but I still have, nobody's told me that negotiations was over with with the city, and nobody told me we were negotiating with the county, and I don't know who authorized either one. And I'm a city board member.
All I know is that I'm, I'm not much of a politician. I'm new to politics. In fact, I'm new to the whole school thing. But from what I see, is this all came up in September. It's November. September to November. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but if we can't work out a deal with somebody between September and November, it's time to move to somebody else.
Board Member Long? If I might, I've had this in the hands of our attorneys to bring it back to the city council.
You, I had parents tell me that you were telling them that, that it was us. You had signed an agreement. They were supposed to be in there. Somehow, that misinformation came out.
Well, I was never contacted. I was never contacted to tell me that it was turned down. I went to see John, and that, that's the only information I got.
When you, when you bought your house, did you get a copy of the signed contract when it was done?
Well, I, I'm going, I'm going to admit that I was under the belief that we could go into the gym when the keys were given to us. I don't recall telling me we couldn't use it. I, I told, I told Tommy Qualls, and if he wants to confess to something, Tommy Qualls could say, Tommy, why don't we do this like we did back in the old days, use a little common sense, and let's get these children in this gym so that they, they can compete? He said, you know, I wish we could. And he's shaking his head, yes, we'll flip the camera, man.
And it takes board action, a board vote to ratify a contract.
And then Ricky Little started calling me, said, Mayor, the board doesn't even know you're in the gym, and we're nearly ready for competition. I said, Ricky, we've only got one more week ago. Can you let us stay in? He says, okay, maybe, I'll let you know. Am I close to the contract? And we were working with this. I was waiting for this contract to come back.
But you shouldn't use the gym before you had to sign the contract.
I, I, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna agree with you, but I used a little common sense and used the gym, because we got, we finished with that...
If somebody were to get hurt in there, we would have been responsible. We did not have, we did not have an agreement, and we did not have insurance. We didn't have, we have a policy that we have to follow on use of facilities.
I can understand that, and we worked on that contract yesterday with the contract for, for his liability.
But we've been going back and forth, Mayor, since September.
We know we've been back, but we have not gone forth, Superintendent.
The two attorneys have been talking?
Well, we, we, we're... I will tell you right now, I will tell you that the City of Jasper, and I'll take the, I will sign it personally, because it's month to month, I believe, and we'll do six, it's eighty days, or sixty, whatever the commissioner wanted. I agree to sign that contract for the city council tonight.
All right. These, the terms of the county's contract are different to what you not talked about yesterday.
But they're very close.
They're very, they're very similar.
Very close, except we talked about the roof. Well, you and I talked about the roof yesterday. We talked about the air conditioning also, which was not meant...
There's no obligation to repair the roof or to do anything?
No, there's obligation to negotiate down the road if it becomes an issue. And I also wanna talk about air conditioning for the summertime, because we have summer problems. But that's something that would, we discussed when we were negotiating, that we're gonna look at all these issues down the road, because the gym is old and it's gonna need to be updated.
So, would you like to take a look at the contract that we have?
What I heard you read a while ago. I see no problem with that, with the county.
That you're willing to pay one hundred percent of all the utilities?
No, it's not a contract.
That is what this contract says.
So, you'll, you'll lose, will lose the city, the county's participation for, is the North Star concerned?
No, the county is not allowing North Star to use it.
For no cost?
Yes, sir.
No. We were charging, we were charging twenty-five dollars an hour, I think, when, or who? North Star or anybody else wants to rent it? Just regular rent, whatever we do down at the...
There would have been some kind of...
What is, what is the? Power bill, the bill, on a, on a, on a day-to-day when it's locked up?
It's about eleven thousand, last year, the utility was about eleven thousand dollars, roughly.
About a thousand bucks.
That's everything. That's gas and water and electricity. Please know that there wasn't much use to the gym, so there wouldn't be a lot of people in there in the evenings and stuff.
That, that was the reason, Dr. Desper, that we arrived at the thousand-dollar-a-month figure. That was the basis for that figure. Just pay the utilities.
Well, that's fair to pay for the utilities if we're using the facility. And that's where we'll have to make up funds, since we mentioned we're not gonna use taxpayer paid dollars. We're gonna use fundraisers and whatever else takes, as we always have run J Y S A. So, I'm willing to look at the contract that the county was willing to sign. It sounds fair to me. I'll speak with the J Y S A, because I'm gonna hit them up for the thousand dollars, like, we don't have to have two golf tournaments instead of one. But, uh, it's, it's, it's an option if we can get the gym. If you don't want J Y S A in the gym, let me know.
I don't see why I'm doing a trip to the shape they're in, we're just all dysfunctional.
Y'all need to authorize me to give my year of confidence. I'd be lucky to have you.
Phillip, that contract does not reflect what I, I talked about, so, for now.
This is the one that you originally wrote. This was originally happened.
That's all we changed.
That's all we changed.
Madam Chair, one quick question, since we really, I guess we broke the core of your mind totally. Commissioner, Joe, did y'all got a program ready to go into the gym, or are you looking for down the road? I mean, I'm just trying, I don't, I'm, I'm concerned that somebody's gonna lose here, and, and I'm trying to see if we can all...
This, I'll just be quite honest with you. Mr. Herman called me on Friday, and more than, the question was asked to me, does the county want the old gym? And I said, this is a deal I can offer, and that's it. Now, whether we've got, we can come up with a program real quick, but no, we didn't have anything lined up. I mean, this was further along for us.
Not gonna mess you up, Joe. Not gonna mess you up with your program.
No, sir.
The ideal answer to this would be to find a way that, that you could share the use of it and split the cost in both of your programs.
If it was my understanding, from talking to Joe Friday, they don't really need the gym. They were just trying to help out the wrestling and cheerleading situation, because they need, we couldn't enter an agreement with J Y S A.
That's what I asked a while ago, so they, they're gonna help J Y S A.
That was the understanding.
We were gonna, we were gonna help and, and get the gym under some sort of government control, but the city or the county, where then if they wanna rent, whatever we do, because I can't change the policy of what I'm doing out at the rec center to here. But there again, I don't wanna step on the toes of the city. If, if y'all are in negotiation with the city, so be it. I mean, I'm just, I'm just here to, to try to get through a, a bad situation.
I'm probably gonna get through another six weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. And I, I hope I'm not the one that stirred up this controversy. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, just trying to get to some sort of conclusion.
You did, and I appreciate, I personally appreciate you guys coming and making your position totally clear. Thank you very much. Doesn't sound like anything ridiculous.
They were gonna, they were gonna allow wrestlers and...
They were gonna start their own program.
Now, they were just gonna let the, let the...
So pleased. Whatever it was, we'll get the kids in the gym.
But let me back to the floor, and if I was on you, is my understanding that y'all are wanting... wanting, is my understanding that y'all are wanting the agreement that is in front of you, with that one change that I mentioned earlier about half of the gas, that you want that modified to where, instead of it being in Tinkins County, it's the City of Jasper? And then I've got your authorization to present that to Mr. Pickett in the morning, after I make those changes.
What about the roof?
Roof is not addressed up here.
Rod agreed to replace the roof when it needed it today.
What we agreed to was, if I make clear that, if the roof is gonna have to be repaired sometime in the future, when the county or city repairs the roof, I didn't want to have a, we're gonna have to rework that 60-day clause, because I don't want to spend X amount of dollars repairing the roof and be 60 days dog sight on the property back. So we would have, at that time, we'd have to renegotiate a longer term to kind of recoup the money that would have to be spent on the roof.
That's pretty much, when I talked to the mayor about this several weeks ago, that's pretty much what he was saying as well. He didn't want to be obligated to make the repair. He will be contractually obligated to make the repair, but when the time came to repair, the parties would sit down and figure out who paid for what. And as of right now, this thing, as Rob said, this thing can be terminated in 60 days. That's gonna happen. The city or whoever spends money to repair the roof, they don't want to be kicked out in 60 days, and you'd have to extend your lease at that time as part of the negotiations. But every one of these drafts that's been silent has to repair the roof, with the understanding that nobody is contractually obligated to repair the roof. And when the roof needs to be repaired, the parties will sit down at the table and figure it out, based on whatever the facts and circumstances are at that time. Is that-
That's my understanding. I don't think it would need to be-
Everybody agrees to that.
Air conditioning up the gym.
I'm afraid it needs to be put in writing, whatever we're gonna talk about.
It can't be contractually agreed to.
And that's what Phillip needs to do, is put it in writing and get something done.
About the roof or about the other?
No, the roof. If somebody's willing to pay for the roof, that's fantastic.
The board doesn't want to be obligated to repair a roof in a building if they're not really using. The city is not, or the county, neither of them are gonna be obligated to repair a roof, because two years from now, they may have other plans, and they may not need the facility. They may lease it and be terminated. So I think in fairness to everybody involved, and so that we can understand, whatever the time, when this need comes to repair the roof, we'll look at the facts and circumstances at that time.
I mean, this is a one-year contract. And Rick, you said that it's gonna be like three years.
No, no.
It's a rolling contract.
It's, you can terminate it with 60 days' notice.
Right.
And until you terminate it, it will continue on. But it's not a, they don't, once they sign it, they don't have the right to use it for a year. You can stop them after 60 days, and they can walk away for 60 days.
But my point being is, Rick has said that you think that roof needs to be replaced in, what, three years?
It probably won't need it for three years.
So I mean, is it a discussion that we need to have now about what we're gonna do about the roof? It's our building.
So isn't it normal, I mean, we're fundamentally gonna be the owners of property. We've already made our mind up not to sell property. It's our obligation to put the roof on there. And I mean, for us to sit, we cannot agree to agree to agree. So if we own the building, we're gonna have to put the roof on it, no matter who gets it. If they want to have it, that'd be a right.
If the county and the city walk away, and that building's still sitting there, and we're using it for North Star, and in three years, what are we gonna do?
Have to put a roof on it.
We're gonna put a roof on it.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
I'm not, just honestly, me personally, I'm not expecting the county or the city to put a roof on that gym.
I don't think you can if they don't own it.
No, they don't own it. It's our building. And if it just sits there, and nobody uses it for two years, and we want to continue-
To keep it.
If we're in North Star, we're gonna put a roof on it.
Remember us having that long discussion about the need to keep the property and all that kind of stuff?
Yes. I mean, I don't think we should sell it. We may need the property.
So where we headed, Phillip?
Is there anything else?
Let me, can I just, I want to, these are the terms that I understand. I don't know what was agreed on this afternoon. But this is what I stated at the beginning of the meeting, and this is, this is what I'll change the words in the candidate's city, and I'll give it to Bill or Johnny in the morning. But the city is allowed to use that gymnasium whenever school is not in session. When the school is in session, the board can use it without any payment or anything of that nature. The city is responsible for hiring anybody to open, close, and supervise the use of the facility. They're allowed to store any equipment and materials, but they do so at their own peril. The city will be responsible for cleaning the facility, as well as the maintenance and general repairs incidental to the interior of the building. Boards should be responsible for the maintenance of the exterior of the building, such as cutting the grass. If during the board's usage, the property is damaged, the board will fix it. If it's damaged, when the city is using it, the city will repair the damage. City be responsible for all utility bills associated with the facility. The city will provide the board proof of insurance, which we discussed, and then we've got the identification language in there that it can, I've looked at all of those. Shouldn't be a big deal. That's, and then it's terminated for whatever reason within 60 days. Is that acceptable to the board?
Is that agreeable, Mr. Desper?
I don't get a vote, sir, but it sounds like a fair, it sounds like a fair deal. Which is all we've been hearing since September.
Yes, sir.
I'll give it to you in the morning, but do you see any issue with that, what you just heard?
That sounds fair.
All right. Now, if y'all want to, you could go ahead and vote, authorize the chairman and your secretary of superintendent to go ahead and execute the, what I just read out. The mayor, the mayor has already had his council vote to authorize him to sign the lease, as he negotiates, as I understand.
I think it's gonna be 80 days, how many, 60 days?
60-day termination.
The council agreed for a one-month agreement, and but 60 days, I believe, they would approve that as well, and I will-
Change it to 30.
No, 60 would be fine. They'll give you more time, one way or the other.
When is the contract gonna come back? How many days for contract to sign, both parties?
Y'all vote tonight. I'm gonna give it to Pickett and Johnny in the morning. I'll change this first thing in the morning, because all I'm gonna do is change the word "city" to "county," take out that one sentence. And then if y'all vote tonight, Wendy, just come by my office or come by Dr. Desper's office and sign. The signature, I get Johnny's signature in the morning.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract as you presented it.
Hang on now. This got dropped, and y'all are saying it got dropped, the ball got dropped from the lawyers. We're not gonna drop the ball this time, right?
First of all, I never got a, I didn't know we didn't have a deal.
Okay. Answer your question. We're not dropping the ball this time, right? We're gonna proceed.
I'm gonna read the contract when it comes to me and see if it says what it's supposed to say, and if it says what the mayor wants to do.
Do not believe that attorney sitting over there?
And he's going to sign, and I will deliver it to the board attorney office. I got it the light.
The concern is, I don't want to have J Y S A calling me this week saying, "I can't be in the gymnasium," because we don't have an agreement.
I assure you, we will take care of the business first thing in the morning.
Okay. He's got it.
But this means, after we sign, will you be able to sign it tomorrow, Wendy?
Yes.
And we will be able to turn the gym legally over to J Y S A tomorrow afternoon?
So I'll get your secretary of-
Thank you.
And then I'll get you a signed copy.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the contract that Phillip has presented. Said I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract that Phillip just presented.
I'll make that one.
Motion is made by Mr. Fincher. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion?
We have to move away with what we already unanimously approved.
You approved it late night, the city's-
We just approved it. We just approved for Phillip to go forward and negotiate. We didn't approve the contract.
So just to understand the motion-
And with offering acceptance, you made an offer.
So we're making the motion to make this offer to the city.
No, this motion is to authorize your chair to execute this contract, once she receives a signed one from the mayor, along the terms that I just read out.
And there's gonna be no more negotiations.
All right.
I'm with you.
Any further questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Five oh. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Absolutely, I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Long. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fincher. All in favor, please.
Can I ask a question?